Well, you're so worthy to it that you've got two organizations.
I'm going to call the City Council Caucus meeting to order for October 14th, 2014. We have one public hearing tonight. The clerk would read that.
Public hearing number one regarding the proposed 2015 operating budget for the city of Schenectady.
And then for original consideration, item number one.
Item number one, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a revocable permit number 585.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a revocable permit number 586.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three, a resolution authorizing the corporation council to bring a lawsuit to recover emergency demolition costs.
Without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four, a resolution appointing Julia Holcomb to the civilian police review board as representative for the Sun Neighborhoods.
Yep, Schenectady United Neighborhoods. Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a state homeland security grant.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim brought by Philip Clayton.
Lot of items tonight that were discussed in claims committee, so without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax surchargeary brought by LNS Realty.
Discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax surchargeary brought by Nicholas Davidson.
Discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim brought by Lucie Anne Rizzo.
Discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim brought by Steven Scribner.
Discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim brought by Verizon.
Discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1025 Stanley Street.
Discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 13.
Item number 13, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1215 Albany Street.
Also discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 14.
Item number 14, a resolution authorizing the sale of 702 Congress Street.
Again discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 15.
Item number 15, a resolution honoring the Goose Hill Neighborhood Award recipients.
This will be taken out of order. Ms. Parazzo will present that one. Item number 16.
Item number 16, a resolution declaring October to be Italian-American Heritage Month.
Also taken out of order. Mr. Riggi will present that. Item number 17.
Item number 17, a resolution declaring October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Also taken out of order. Ms. Porterfield will present that. And item number 18.
Item number 18, a resolution declaring October to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Also taken out of order. Mr. Kozier will present that. And then we have one item for unanimous consent that was inadvertently left off of our committee agenda last week. The clerk would read item number 18A.
Number 18A, a resolution, an ordinance regarding a moratorium on convenience stores.
Okay, Mr. Mutavaren will move that to the agenda, seconded by Mr. Kozier. All in favor? Aye. And then motion to move it to the consent agenda. Mr. Mutavaren, Mr. Kozier, all in favor? Aye. Okay. All right, if there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus, I will declare that meeting closed and we will move to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 14th. And if you please rise for the invocation by Reverend Dave Cheetham of Shreek and Ash Mander of Schenectady.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Beloved brothers and sisters, a very, very good evening. Kindly join me in this divine prayer. Divine-loving gracious Father, please accept our helpful salutations, humble petitions, and sweet love. Lord, you are so sweet, you are so holy, and you are so powerful that if we were to render all the seas ink, all the forests a pen, and all the earth a paper, it would be inadequate to glorify a fragment of your divine majesties, your tender mercies, and your loving kindness. Blessed Lord, may our thoughts perpetually dwell in your unique glory, may our hearts intimately merge each other's, and may our soul be illuminated in your pure divinity. Father, help us to cast aside our false pride, blessed desires, dangerous anger, unholy prejudices, inhuman greed, nefarious jealousies, and narrow-minded fanaticism, which create animosity, which creates disharmony, and which create painful conflict. Lord bless us that we can shine with our fading smiles, universal peace, and eternal joy, so there will be no more pain, poverty, and peril in the lives of everyone. Father, please continue to bless the honor of the mayor, these dutiful counselors, and every sweet soul of this assembled city, so that it could have the strength to continue to perform the duties, so that their dreams and aspirations can be accomplished, and so that their needs and their wants can be met. Lord, we thank you again and again. We glorify you again and again. We beseech you for your sublime blessings again and again. Father, forgive us for the mistakes, offenses, and sins that we have committed knowingly and unknowingly. May peace be unto all, may joy be unto all, and may divine blessing be unto all. God bless this assembly. God bless the city, and God bless America. Thank you very much.
I'll ask Marva Isaacs to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Parazzo. Ms. Porterfield. Mr. Kozier. Mr. Riggi. Mr. Mutavaren. Ms. King.
Present. Okay, we have four out-of-order resolutions, and we'll take number one, the Italian Heritage Resolution, and I'll ask Mr. Riggi to take here, read that one.
Call all Italian-Americans on the side of the rail, please. Come on the side of the rail. I don't know, have you been coming in and there's a nice display downstairs, and that's due to Dolores Scalise. She did a nice job putting that together as usual.
Madam Chair.
You have the floor.
A resolution declaring October to be Italian-American Heritage Month, whereas the voyages of the Italian-born explorer Christopher Columbus heralded the merger of European and Native American cultures, and whereas Columbus' first contact with the New World in 1492 is commemorated as a state and federal holiday every year in the month of October, and whereas the history of the city of Schenectady has been significantly influenced by the rich heritage of Italy, and whereas over 5.4 million Italians immigrated to the United States between the years of 1820 and 1991, and the city of Schenectady has long been a home for one of the largest Italian-American communities in the capital district, and whereas the strength, continuing success of Schenectady, the vitality of our neighborhoods, and the effectiveness of our community depend on the distinctive and sterling qualities demonstrated by various ethnic groups exemplified by members of the Italian-American community. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby pause in their deliberations to proclaim the month of October to be Italian-American Heritage Month and recognize the ongoing contributions of the Italian-American community to our great city. Madam Chair, I move this resolution.
Right, seconded by Ms. Parazzo. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, congratulations.
This is Mr. Peter Sperano from the Sons of Italy.
Speaking in behalf of the Sons of Italy, I'd like to express our thanks to the mayor and to the city council for this resolution and the recognition of the contributions of Italian-Americans that this resolution represents. As you look at the history of Schenectady, it's filled with the contribution of Italian-Americans, both in business, education, sports, certainly, law, and of course, government. And we're proud that even today, as you look out the front door, there's a rebirth of downtown Schenectady, and we're proud to note that the Italian, Italian-Americans are playing a major role in that rebirth, making Schenectady a better place for all of us. Again, thanks for the resolution and the recognition that the resolution represents. And as a side note, I'd like to note that Thursday at 10 o'clock, we'll be placing a wreath at the Columbus statue in Veterans Park, followed by a light reception at our Lodge Hall on Hamburg Street, and you're all welcome. Thank you again very much.
Thank you.
And just a reminder, next year is the 100th anniversary of the Lodge. Okay.
Okay, the next one will be the resolution for the Goose Hill residents. Ms. Parazzo. You have the floor.
This is a resolution honoring the recipients of the Goose Hill Neighborhood Association Good Neighbor Awards, whereas the city of Schenectady recognizes that it derives its strength from the communities within it, and whereas the Goose Hill Neighborhood Association is a shining example of an active community involvement best demonstrated by its recent efforts to revitalize Stuymetz Park, and whereas one of its members, Brenda Thomas, remembering the lessons taught by her mother regarding the importance of helping, the helping of others, took the lead in using her own energy and resources to improve her community when in 2007 she instituted the Good Neighbor Awards, and whereas the Good Neighbor Awards acknowledge residents throughout the city of Schenectady for their individual contributions to their communities, and whereas in the year 2014, the Goose Hill Neighborhood Association saw fit to acknowledge five recipients, and whereas Don Birch, owner of the Sawmill Tavern, received the award based on his involvement in several charities to the benefit of children and the elderly, including his efforts to provide those who cannot provide for themselves with free meals, and whereas Karen B. Johnson, former mayor and member of city council, as well as current county legislator, received the award in recognition of her 40 years of public service and her contributions to Stuymetz Park renovation, and whereas Margaret Novak, a resident of Randolph Road, received the award for her organization of an annual community block party, an event which could only occur through the sheer force of her personal will, and whereas Peter Reich, a resident of Goose Hill, received the award based on his attentiveness to the care and maintenance of his community and his sense of community pride demonstrated by the aid he gives to others, and whereas Mildred White, a resident of Goose Hill, received the award by showing that community involvement can be something as simple as engaging neighbors in conversation and providing sage advice. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize the 2014 recipients of the Goose Hill Neighborhood Association's Good Neighbor Awards and encourage the residents of the city to take similar interest in their neighborhoods by noting that the sum of the whole cannot be greater than the sum of its parts. May I move this, Madam President?
Seconded by Ms. Porterfield. All in favor? Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council, and this is a wonderful attempt to recognize neighbors in our community for picking up litter and trash, for helping others during the wintertime, and also for different agencies, as a library, and Ellis Hospital, and local businesses. And it could be just simple as being kind, doing an act of kindness for the next-door neighbor, recognizing the beautification of their houses and remodeling, and we thought, the Goose Hill Neighborhood Association thought, it would be wonderful to acknowledge these individuals, their community residents, anyone can do this, and many people have and have not been recognized, and we would like to, and over the six years, there have been over 60 people who have been acknowledged for these acts of kindness, and thank you very much, and I hope everyone goes back and remembers this, and tries to help in their neighborhood to restore the neighborhood to the beautiful neighborhoods that they had before, and I'd like to think of it as a renaissance. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next out-of-order resolution is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Ms. Porterfield. Is this everyone?
Yeah.
Thank you. Madam President, you have the floor.
Okay, this is a resolution recognizing the month of October as Stop Domestic Violence Month, whereas the month of October has been designated as Stop Domestic Violence Month, and whereas domestic violence permeates the lives and compromises the safety of thousands of New Yorkers with tragic, destructive, and often fatal results, and encourages within a wide spectrum of relationships, including married and formerly married couples, couples with children in common, couples who live together or have lived together, gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender couples, and couples who are dating or have dated in the past, and whereas domestic violence is recognized as a pattern of coercive tactics which take, which can include physical, psychological, sexual, economic, and emotional abuse perpetrated by one person against an adult intimate partner with the goal of establishing and maintaining power and control over the victim, and whereas domestic violence destroys lives, undermines self-esteem, and exacts a tremendous toll on the lives of the persons it directly and indirectly affects, and whereas in honor of this cause, the city of Schenectady recognizes the Gold Purple Initiative that encourages people to wear purple in support of the important goal of stopping domestic violence. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Schenectady declare October 2014 to be Stop Domestic Violence Month in the city of Schenectady, and recognize the tragedies caused by and associated with domestic violence, and encourage members of the community to wear purple in support of the efforts to stop domestic violence in the city of Schenectady. Madam Chair, I'd like to move this resolution.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren. All in favor? Aye. Congratulations.
On behalf of Roe Taylor, our executive director, who had another commitment tonight, and our board members, I do want to thank the city of Schenectady for acknowledging that this is an extremely important issue. One side, the YWCA has been in here since 1888. We celebrated our 125th anniversary last year. This coming year, in 2015, the shelter program will celebrate its 40th anniversary, and we were just talking about it a little while ago. It's a little bit odd to say a celebration because for 40 years, we're still fighting this cause, and so we do need, we need the city, we need everyone that's here to join forces because education is going to be the only way that we're going to get out of this. So put us out of business. It would be wonderful. I know that's a little odd thing to be saying in this day and age, but 40 years of the same program, it has grown tremendously from a little shelter now to a 20-bed shelter, full-time advocates, full-time counselors, and an employment program. We service, just in our shelter alone, we serviced over 425 families. That's a lot of families. So certainly thank you for the recognition, and we certainly continue to need all the support of the city and the police and the fire and all of those departments here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all the work you do. All right, and last but certainly not least is a resolution declaring this month Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This is something very important to me as a 20-year breast cancer survivor, so we'll invite members of the fire department to come up.
Please, all the members, come right inside the rail. Please, join us. They're gathering in. If we could have them. And Madam Chair?
Yes, you have the floor.
Thank you. Whereas the month of October has been designated as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer by collaborating with several national public service agencies, professional associations, and government agencies to work together to ensure the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month message is heard by thousands of women and their families. Whereas the American Cancer Society estimates in the United States more than 226,000 new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed in women this year, and whereas the American Cancer Society estimates in the United States more than 2,100 new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed in men this year. Whereas through research and advocacy, significant advances have been made in the fight against breast cancer, including significant decreases in mortality, and whereas the 2.9 million breast cancer survivors living in the United States today are a testament to the courage as well the importance of promoting awareness about breast cancer, providing information, funding research, following recommended screening guidelines, and offering treatment to those who are affected. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Schenectady declare October 2014 to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Schenectady, and ask all citizens to join this important issue. I may move this?
Yes, okay, seconded by Ms. Parazzo. All in favor? Aye.
I would just like to say thank you to the mayor and to the council for this resolution. This is the fire department's third year involved in the cancer foundation, and rather than me telling you about it, I'm going to turn the microphone over to firefighter Parlatory. These are the people who put canvas hours in the project, so I'm going to turn it over to her. These are the people who deserve the credit.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for recognizing this. Unfortunately, we have a need for this type of foundation to protect our own and research and try to develop a better plan to protect us from getting cancer. This program that we started three years ago, wearing these shirts for breast cancer, it's, it's a privilege to have people in the community to come up to us and share their experiences and thank us for showing support just by wearing a T-shirt. It's incredibly rewarding, and we hope that the community knows that we do recognize that the struggle, even though it's silent, you know, we hope these shirts personify the, the help that we offer you and continue to offer. So thank you very much for recognizing this. It's super important to us. Assistant Chief? Assistant Chief?
And I just want to say thank you for the work you do on this, but then I know that our assistant chief also has another announcement to make.
Yes, as long as we're talking about good things, important things, I appreciate your allowing me to speak tonight about this. Two months ago, we were approached by the American Red Cross. They have adopted a five-year plan to reduce fire fatalities by 25%. And in doing that, they chose Schenectady as one of the cities to launch this program in. They wanted to do that by reaching out to the neighborhoods with the most need. We picked Hamilton Hill neighborhood, and we worked very closely with Marva, who was instrumental in all of this. And a lot of hard work went into this. We had the mayor, Councilwoman Porterfield, fifteen members from the American Red Cross, and twenty-plus members from the Schenectady Fire Department gave up the better part of their day, October 11th, to organize and install smoke detectors and educate people in the neighborhoods that, from a list of names that Marva had given us, with the people that she knew in the neighborhoods that were in need of these things. We consider this to be, though a small program to start, it was very successful. From there, we're going to communicate further with the neighborhoods, develop this program, and our goal is to get as many smoke detectors and educate as many people in the City of Schenectady as we possibly can. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we have one public hearing tonight, and that is on the city, the 2015 budget. I have no one signed up to speak to that, so I'm going to declare that public hearing closed, and we'll move to the approval of the minutes from September 22nd, 2014. Mr. Kosher, seconded by Mr. Riggi. All in favor?
Aye.
Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the city council for Tuesday, October 14th. Under official from the mayor, a list of appointments dated October 14th, 2014. Under general, there are none. Under petitions, there are none.
Thank you. Committee reports. Ms. Porterfield? No, okay. Any committee? Mr. Riggi.
The chairman of the Claims Committee, I know there was a comment made here at the last meeting about we're lowering taxes with tax certs for commercial properties and not for residential properties. Just to make it clear, tax certuraries have nothing to do with lowering taxes, even though that may be the end result. It has to do with lowering assessment. That's what it's doing. It's making the assessment more equal. And those, what we grant here, we just don't pull those numbers out of thin air and say, oh, let's take 2138 Campbell Avenue and grant them relief. It's because they produce proof that relief should have been granted. And that's what it is. And we're granting that under tax certury before it goes to court. So actually, we're saving money in a way for the city because we're getting in, our corporation council has been brokering these deals, where we're getting a better break as far as lowering the assessments. But all that being said, I know people have the wrong idea about what grieving your assessment is. In actuality, it really has nothing to do with lowering taxes, even though the end result is that happens. But if we have equal assessment, then it won't have a thing to do with lowering taxes. And that's what we need, and that's why I've always been pushing for citywide reassessment. But I just wanted to clarify that, just so people know. Assessment and taxes are two different things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then we will move on to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have no one signed up to speak on the agenda, so I'm going to declare that portion of the meeting closed, and we will move to approval of the legislative agenda. Mr. Riggi moves it. Seconded by Mr. Rudiger. All in favor?
Aye.
Then we'll move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have, what, two, four, six, eight people signed up. The first is Joy Hall.
I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. We've got three problems. Number one, Eastern Avenue needs to be paved all the way, and you need to put up more walklights in certain places. Mallard Street, still haven't got the walklight up there yet because there's too many people crossing that street and almost getting hit. Every boy, they need to update the time on the walklight down there because people are speeding like crazy, driving, and don't take no consideration for the elderly or the handicap. And this has got to stop. They got to stop speeding. If you want to speed, leave the house earlier. That's what you got to do. I say we got to get this thing on the road or to the right track.
Thank you. Anthony, is it Carrada?
As a resident and citizen of the City of Schenectady, I never dreamed in my thirty-six years of life I would get involved in the crooked business of politics, and yet I am. And now I am glad I became aware of this issue, the inhumane conditions of the dogs that you city officials think are just acceptable, which are not. And we citizens of New York State have come together to be the voice of the voices. And we are doing this as a protest of the mistreatment and inhumane conditions of the dogs that are kept in this kennel and are falling in the footsteps of others. Throughout history, we have done the same thing and have changed history. A few examples, the Los Angeles Tea Party and others. Also, you city officials think that it's okay to cover up the things like this kennel and other things that you do as your job without those residents and citizens, but start to notice and question. And now as a resident in the City of Schenectady, I have begun to question officials as it is my civic and patriotic duty to do. And you think you can make us go away just by ignoring us? I think not, because sooner or later, there will be a rebellion or revolt of the citizens which you officials cannot control because we are fed up with how the mayor has been doing an Obama tactic by taking people's homes and businesses away from them, by raising taxes so they cannot pay their mortgages for their houses and businesses. And I say it is time for us citizens to vulnerable against you only to have you leave your office before November 2015.
Thank you.
Can I say to councilman, Mr. Riggi?
Excuse me, please, please address me as the president. Marva Isaacs.
Madam President, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I would like to thank the mayor for being out there on Saturday helping us. I would like to thank City Councilwoman Marion Porterfield. Everybody leave the house early to come out there to help. And on the 18th is the Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association Awards Dinner. And I'm looking forward to seeing everybody that's sitting here there, without a doubt of looking out to see everybody there. Thank you. It's at the Highbury Union Hall at 5:30. Thank you.
And do you have tickets?
Yes, I do have tickets.
Thank you. Okay. Tony Beno.
Madam Chair, may I address the mayor, please? I'm not going to be bad.
In that case, yes.
People have been asking me, what's going on with the Oak Street Bridge? We were at a meeting in February, they said that they were supposed to get the plans drawn for that. Nothing has come up on it yet. I don't know if it's the state, if it's the railroad, or whomever it is. I mean, they said they were supposed to get this thing complete by 2015. I'd like to see it before I die, believe me. I would. And Mr. Tonko said that he would get together with you, that you ever talked to him so that they could push people for this. I mean, us people living over there, it's getting bad. I mean, people are forgetting about us now. The bridge has been closed a year and a half. It's bad over there. So I would appreciate if we could get some answers on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I kept my word.
Oh, okay. Stefan, is it Kruger?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmen, Councilwomen. My name is Stefan Kruger. I'm a volunteer at Rody Empire Rescue. I'm sure you're all familiar with me. I've been coming here almost three months now, asking questions that we've had, quite honestly, very little answers to. We have received your comprehensive plan. I was here for the presentation, and it's a great step forward. It's a great first step, but there's so much more that needs to be done at the helm. We were just recently told that the ACOs, the five ACOs, have received training at Mohawk Hudson Humane Society. The rescue community in this area is very tight. We all work with each other. We work with all the animal shelters in the area. And we know that basically what happened for the training was they went down and they observed the workers at Mohawk Hudson actually doing safe revals. Safe revale is a very complicated thing. It's not something you can learn just by watching someone do it. You need to do it yourself multiple times, and you need to be certified. I'm actually worried now that the ACOs may be putting themselves in danger by trying to do these. They watched them do them with non-aggressive dogs. So that's a huge issue. And there are just so many little things that we need to clear up. And we've been coming here for three months, asking questions. We've had very little answers. There's volunteers lined up. How come the volunteers aren't being allowed in? How come the rescue groups aren't being allowed in? We are told that rescue groups are being allowed in, but like I said, very small community. We cannot find out what rescue group's going in there because none of the ones that we know are going there. So I would really appreciate some answers on what rescue groups are going there, what the adoption process is, things like that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Patty Haber?
I don't have a speech. I just have questions still. Obviously, see the shirts, we're selling them actually if anybody wants to buy them. It goes to the dogs for their help. But basically, I send an email to the council members. Mayor, I would have sent one to you. I don't have your email. Basically, asking the questions. I would love for us to sit down. I'm not political. This, you know, every week, we ask questions. Every week, you know, next week, you guys might answer what you know, what you don't know. Honestly, we're at the point where we proved what was wrong there. Now it's time for them to prove what's right. I know that they're overworked. I know that they get people, they've got new people in, and that's great. But things were not changed as of that progressive, the comprehensive plan. Things had not been changed to that point that the paperwork said had been changed. So we're concerned. And I think at this point, the only thing that would really make us go away, I'm sure you're tired of seeing us and we're tired of being here, is to see for ourselves. You know, maybe we can go down there and take a look and be assured that the dogs are treated right, that they're back on track with things the way they need to be done. We really need to find out why it takes so long to find out if we can even go down there. I provided a waiver that other animal control offices use for volunteers to come in. The fact that, you know, there's no trespassing with threat of arrest, these things just don't make us feel warm and fuzzy about how the dogs are being treated. So that being said, I don't know how the political world works here, but if we could sit down maybe and talk about this face-to-face rather than this back-and-forth every week thing, maybe we can get somewhere. Maybe some of us can go down there, take a look, and assure the others that things are okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mohammed Haifaz.
Let me, my name is Mohammed Haifaz, and I live in the city. And I just passed some chart here, you know, very simple chart about the budget. I heard that you're increasing property taxes by 3%. And the first chart here, I'm going to call, I called it actually the destructive chart. And if you look at the first circle here on top, if you actually raise our property taxes, homes become unaffordable. People stop paying taxes. City forecloses in three to four years on stripped-down properties, properties that haven't been maintained for years. The loan foreclosure process creates blight. Then the city gets loans to tear down blight. As a result, the properties are permanently off the tax roll. And that's the first chart. And then the city goes back to the cycle of raising taxes again. So it's a vicious cycle. I call this the vicious cycle and the chart as a destructive cycle. Now, I have another chart, which is the constructive cycle here. If the city actually reduces the taxes, homes become affordable, people continue to pay taxes. When they hear the news, other people come in and move to the city. No blight, no loans, no stripped-down properties, no need for a casino to come rescue us with the promise of reducing our taxes, and the city goes back to reducing the taxes year after year. It sounds simple, but look at the chart. We have raising taxes on one hand, reducing taxes, constructive cycle versus destructive cycle, constructive versus destructive, constructive versus destructive, is, you know, reducing versus increasing. So please, you know, don't claim this is not as simple as it sounds. It is so simple. Just look at these charts. Try reducing the property taxes three or four years, you know, in a row, and find out what happens. Some cities have done that in California. Finally, I'm waiving my copyrights to these charts, so even though they're fantastic. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ronald, is it Gern?
Garrett.
Garrett. Okay, sorry.
Mayor and all the council, I'm deeply disturbed this evening. I wrote this note on October the 9th. I'm a resident of 104 Odell Street, Schenectady, New York. I bought that residence in 2010. To whom it may concern here in the City of Schenectady, New York, I Ronald Gary, a resident of Schenectady, all my life, a volunteer for the Proctors, thirteen to fourteen years, an honorable veteran. Put my life on the line one time, and I'm ready to put it on the line again today when it comes to my patriotic duties. On September the 25th, 2014, around about 11:00 to 12 something in the morning or noon, my fiance's father and I went into a convenience store at 4:45 State Street. He went in first because he said he wanted to play some numbers. I went to the new ticket box that we have downtown to find out that it didn't take dollars and also to find out that I didn't have any change, nickels, dimes. Most of the time, I don't. Most of the time, I don't, because I saved that for my grandson and put it away for a rainy day for him. Anyway, I go in while my father-in-law is, my future father-in-law is playing his numbers, and I asked the proprietor of the store for change. He said in a snobbish way, go to the bank. We don't give out change. So I said to him nicely, you mean to tell me that we come in here to give you our, in other words, to spend our money with you? And we can't get change for the meter to keep from getting a ticket? At that time, he told me, no, I told you, go to the bank and get the fuck out, you fucking nigger. There is no need for this kind of stuff to go on.
Mr. Garrett, I need you to summarize, your three minutes is up.
My three minutes is up?
Yeah.
This is no longer a secret amongst the city council. I want something done about that, because if that's the kind of language he's gonna use, he shouldn't be in business.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up for a privilege of the floor regarding city business, so I'm gonna declare that portion of the meeting closed. We'll move to miscellaneous business of the council. Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mayor, I'm sure, hopefully, you'll answer Tony Beno, because I get a lot of questions on that, too, the Oak Street Bridge. I'm not sure. I talked into the engineer, I think there was a problem with CEX on that, but it's ongoing, that's for sure. My other question is, I'm hoping, I know with Mr. Olson leaving, but I'm hearing that we don't have any snowplowing contracts in place yet. I'm kind of concerned about that, with the snow season upon us, so that's another one of my concerns. And the other thing about the volunteers at the shelter, I understand about the subrogation and the waivers, but how do we get around that when we have volunteers do other things in the city? That's my question, I guess. We use volunteers to do a lot of things. Are we at risk, then, if we have somebody volunteer to work in the park, or, you know, to do any other work on city land, which happens all the time? We have cleanups all the time in city land, and this has never come up before, needing a special waiver to be concerned about subrogation. So maybe, Mr. Falatiko, maybe you can answer this, but I just don't understand why it's needed for some volunteers and not for other volunteers. I mean, these people are here, they're willing to help. And if they want to volunteer, I don't know what the problem is. And again, what they're asking for, maybe to inspect the facilities? I think that's a reasonable request, also. If you want to, you know, add transparency to this issue, I think that's one way, certainly, to do it. I think they've been reasonable in their requests. But the thing about the volunteers and the waiver, I just can't get my arms around that because it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Maybe I'm missing something in why it's not needed for other activities in the city when people volunteer to help. So if we can get a clarification on that, I'd appreciate it. And thanks for all the resolutions tonight, especially breast cancer. That's dear to my heart. I lost two of my sisters to breast cancer. It's an insidious disease, and I'm glad that there's been strides made recently. But still, it's a terrible, terrible disease, and I just can only stress, you know, just for men with prostate cancer to get screened, and also women to get screened for breast cancer, because it's a terrible, terrible disease, and it's really dear to my heart. So thanks for sponsoring that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. And I'd like to say congratulations to the four recipients of the resolutions tonight. Mr. Riggi has spoken about the one for the breast cancer, and I also want to mention, for the domestic violence, the city has lit a part of the clock tower in purple to recognize that month, and the other three sides, I think, are in pink. And I'd also like to, Ms. Isaac spoke about it, to thank the firefighters and the American Red Cross for coming out this weekend and installing the firefighters. They did a great job. It was actually a lot of fun. And more people should really, really make sure that their fire alarm, their fire extinguishers, or alarms, rather, are working, because some of the houses we went in, they said, oh, I have one, but there's no batteries. That's equivalent to not really having one. And so these are free, so it's free, and they're bringing them in, and they want to reduce the number of deaths. So I want to thank the firefighters again, and just to make people aware that the opportunity presents itself to go ahead and do that. I have to give a lot of credit to Marva Isaacs for actually walking around the neighborhood and finding people who need these put in. And people were extremely receptive in having the fire department in the house on, pretty early on a Saturday morning, when a lot of people want to sleep in. In terms of what has happened to Mr. Gary, I'm not sure what we could do about that. I certainly am disturbed. We are a very diverse and multicultural community, so this type of behavior, language shouldn't be used against any group, period. So again, I don't know what we can do, but certainly, it's something that we, maybe we need to talk more about, the diversity that goes on in our community, and how everyone's ethnicity needs to be respected, because we're all here together, we live together, and everyone has a right to go to whatever store they choose to, or maybe if they're not being treated right, not to go there. That's up to, that's really, you know, a consideration. But I'm sorry that happened to you. I wasn't involved in it, but I'm sorry that that did occur. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kozier.
Thank you. And if I may, just to extend a congratulations to Ms. Julia Holcomb for your nomination, and of course, being now approved to the Civilian and Police Review Board. She's an outstanding woman of the community. We've known each other for many, many years, the school district, and she's gonna be a great asset to that board. And of course, she is a member of the Goose Hill community as well. And of course, to Bob Harvey, who's right next to her for nominating her from the Schenectady United Neighborhoods. We appreciate that as well. Talking about the bridge piece, again, I sit on the school district's redistricting committee, and that actually was brought to our attention when we were looking at the elementary school zones. We had forgotten that the bridge was closed, and we had to switch some of these students. There's about 60-plus kids in that area that this is affecting. So we know the mayor's doing ongoing conversations with the folks involved, including Congressman Tonko. We appreciate that. But again, I think it's certainly something that we want to stay on top of, because it has enormous issues throughout. Last week as well, I mentioned to some of you folks that had the honor of, well, the honor, but the privilege of driving around with code enforcement, something that the city council, and of course, the mayor, has really pushed for the last year or so, was cracking down our convenience stores. And I got to see it firsthand, where we drove for a half a day, visiting several of the stores. Unfortunately, the one on State Street was not on the list that I had gone to. But just to see our folks in action, we had the police, we had the fire department with us, we had code enforcement, and walking into the stores and just seeing some of the stuff, that was incredible. On Albany Street in particular, we walked in one of the stores, and there was cases upon cases of stolen merchandise, cell phones, video cameras, videos themselves, and no license, of course, no permits, and our code enforcement folks were right there, and they padlocked that building within minutes. So it's very good to see that crack down, and even to the fact where, while I was campaigning, visiting one of the houses, one of the owners didn't even know his last name, and came up there, and he said that he appreciated what the council and the mayor's been doing on enforcing these code violations at the convenience stores. We had someone with trash outside their, the store sites themselves, with a Rolls-Royce parked right on the sidewalk. Within minutes, Bill Maseka was out there, they had code enforcement there again, issued a citation, and within two days, all the garbage was gone in there. They're actually building a shed to have the garbage placed in there. But just, these are the things that we've been talking about. Again, the little annoyances that have to be taken care of. And again, the mayor has done a good job, has done this council. So I think it's something we want to continue to push, because it's very well-recognized. Code enforcement itself, I had the pleasure of riding along the day before that, where we were doing rental certificates, actually going to homes that had legally applied for rental certificates, and how our code inspectors were searching for all these things, as we're talking about smoke detectors in particular. And by the way, a good rule of thumb is, when we change our time, when we move the clocks back, always change your batteries. That's always a good rule of thumb that we use, so please be aware of that. But again, see these men and women doing their jobs. We talk about them all the time, how they're not doing their jobs, the yards, the streets, what are these folks doing? But you know what? Take a ride with them, and just to see firsthand what they were doing. I was very honored to be with them. And again, thanks for the council and the mayor for supporting them, and we'll continue to do that as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Moonveren.
Thank you. Just want to touch on the public hearing for the budget. Unfortunately, no one came out to speak tonight with regards to the public hearing. It's unfortunate. I mean, there's a lot of calls and emails that we are raising taxes by 3%. I just want to remind people out there, we're now raising taxes at this point. We are going through the budget, line by line, and we are able to make our deliberation and to look at the budget very carefully. And I just want to remind people again, we are not raising the taxes, or the taxes have been raised by 3%. We're still deliberating. Thank you. Just one announcement, the Hindu Festival of Light is this Saturday, September the 18th, and is gonna be held at Schenectady Hindu Temple from 6:00 PM. I encourage folks to attend and be part of the Hindu celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Riggi, again.
Sorry, October the 18th, from 6:00 PM, sorry.
Just quickly, Mr. Kozier reminded me when he's congratulating Julia Holcomb, I have to tell you a quick story. I don't want to embarrass Julia, but about her integrity. When she was serving Desert Storm, she made sure her taxes were paid. I know we have problems with people paying taxes in the city of Schenectady. She made sure the taxes were paid from Desert Storm when she was serving our country. And I don't know what else to say about that. And the late Fred Bartz, he was just, he was just blown over by that, that she made sure the money came from Iraq, came here to Schenectady to pay her taxes. So you made a great choice for a person that, especially integrity-wise, for the Police Review Board. I just want to say thank you, and thank you for serving our country and for serving Schenectady.
Thank you. I'm glad you mentioned that. Mr. Mayor.
Madam President, on the Oak Street Bridge, again, the council has approved the engineering work. We're doing the design and evaluation of the bridge. That will be back as quickly as it can be. It'll probably be another month. Hopefully, that will be in the budget, so we can then look to, and I say the budget, the money that's been allocated from the state, to be able to do the remediation on the bridge next construction season. Newsies has opened, the Broadway play, that's interesting, here in Schenectady, where they teched that show here in Schenectady. And for people who don't understand that, it's the, they work out the bugs, they bring it in, they design the sets. They've spent roughly the last month here, maybe a little bit more, working that out so that it will now roll out on a nationwide tour. And we hope that Proctors will be able to continue to attract those Broadway shows, where they'll come here, again, primarily during the summer. It brings technical people here, support people, it generates business for local employees and businesses, and we're just excited to have that adding to the reputation of Schenectady's revitalized downtown. Today, did the unveiling for our solar arrays up on the Beavis Hill Reservoir. That's a 711-kilowatt facility. It's a little over 3,000 solar panels. So it's one of the largest municipal facilities in the state. This weekend, we'll have our monthly open house for our homes program, and hopefully we'll be also showing more of the houses that the city has. You know, just to emphasize the importance of that in our taxes, where, yes, we've struggled with the cost of maintaining the services and the quality of life here in the community, but the budget that I've proposed to the council, the collectibility is improving, but it still assumes 11 and 1/2% uncollectible. If we went to a normal historical uncollectible, which used to be 1 and 1/2%, you know, that's, would translate into a 10% tax reduction. Can you look at the state aid formula, where Schenectady and the municipal aid comes up on the short end? The quick reference that we tend to use is Utica, that is $5 million. That $5 million would translate into a roughly 15% reduction in property taxes. You know, our friends at Union College, they've structured some of their deals, where it took property off the tax rolls. That's roughly 2% to the tax roll every year. But those things add up, and that translates into the higher fundamental property tax here, and we're working through that. We're looking to get rid of the blighted property, improve our collectibility, and attract homeowners here. And so it's over the long term that we're bringing stability. And it's, three years ago, we were talking about huge deficits here, high level of stress in the city. We've moved out of that. We're not under the level of stress we were before. It's not perfect, but it is improving. And I appreciate the council, I appreciate the work that the staff has done, and again, the residents of this city working with us to make the community a better place. Also, this past week, the city was awarded a little over, almost $3.2 million in a Lead Safe Housing Program grant. And that will allow houses to be remediated so that primarily children will not be exposed to the ill effects of lead paint. And it's really a great program, where we have a lot of old housing, and it's something that, there are, people are signing up for it now, that they should call our Development Department if people haven't yet, to see if you qualify and to be able to take advantage of that to remediate the hazard of lead paint in your house. Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. I'll just add on to your comment about Newsies. Several of us were at an event at Proctors last week, and the speaker was, I believe, the producer of Newsies, and he was talking about how, when they knew they were coming here, they couldn't even pronounce the name Schenectady, but how, once they got here, they've fallen in love with the city. And so that was just kind of a very nice thing to hear. And also, again, back to the Breast Cancer Awareness Month, early detection is key. So if you have any concerns, get to your doctor immediately. It's just so, so important. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kozier, seconded by Ms. Porterfield. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.